Welcome Diana, thank you.
Thank you. Alright, so now we're shifting gears to transportation. So I will be providing the financial overview and the travel demand model update and development impact fee study items and Ben Moody will be presenting the pavement condition assessment and the capital improvement program. So to start with the financial overview. California imposes per gallon excise taxes on gasoline and diesel fuel, sales taxes on gasoline and diesel fuel, and registration taxes on motor vehicles. These funds make their way to Yuba City through several sources, so you have the highway users tax account, the three-year state general fund TCRF loan repayment, which is Traffic Ingestion Relief Fund, road maintenance and rehabilitation account, Transportation Development Act that comes to us through local transportation funds, and the road maintenance franchise fee from Recology. So the highway users tax account, often referred to as the gas tax, has provided revenues for decades. You can see the diesel fuel tax is 13 cents per gallon, the gasoline tax is 18 cents per gallon. The Transportation Ingestion Relief Fund loan repayment, so through the very controversial SB1, stipulated the repayment of 706 million by the state general fund to transportation funds over three fiscal years, with 75 million to be allocated to local streets and roads from repayments of the TCRF. We also have the SB1, the Road Repair and Accountability Act, which they've now changed from for operational purposes as the Road Maintenance and Rehabilitation Account. The act increases per gallon fuel excise taxes, diesel fuel sales taxes, and vehicle registration taxes. So the funds are first allocated to a series of specific programs, and here are just a few of them. 200 million for the state local partnership program for existing and aspiring self-help jurisdictions. So if you are an agency that has a self-help initiative, there's automatically 200 million that you could be eligible for. 100 million for the active transportation program, so the city's been successful in the past in getting ATP money grant programs. 400 million for straight bridge and culvert maintenance and rehabilitation. So those are the larger ticket items and it goes lower from there. But with the remainder of the funds, it's split 50% to the state highway account, 25% to cities, and then 25% to counties. And then we have the Transportation Development Act, which is administered by Caltrions through regional planning and programming agencies, which is SECOG for Yuba City. The funds are allocated to each county based on population, taxable sales, and transit performance. And if council recalls, the finance department brought the TDA claim for fiscal year 1819 to city council at the February 5th agenda. And then finally, through our Recology contract, we receive a road maintenance franchise fee. And so the basis of it is that the city provides services in connection with Recology collection services. So some of them may ask, but what do you mean by that? Well, we provide street sweeping and there's also an impact on our residential roadways with the loaded garbage trucks. And so for that, Recology provides the city 1% of their gross billings net of any fees billed. So how are the funds used? They're split between operational expenses to cover salaries and benefits, material services and supplies, and then capital improvement projects. And those are typically road rehabilitation, widening, new construction, storm drain improvements, sidewalk ADA improvements, traffic signals, and streetlights. And then this chart provides a breakdown of how those funds are typically distributed amongst the capital projects. So you can see here in the orange, that road rehabilitation traditionally gets about 50% of those capital funds. If you look at a revenue history, what you can see is that you have the highway user tax account in blue, LTF in red, you have the road maintenance franchise fee from Recology in green, this loan repayment, and then the RIMRA funds, so the SB1 funds. These funds will pretty much stay the same for the remainder of RIMRA, but it's a nice addition to have to our revenues. And then you can see that the highway user tax and LTF have stayed somewhat, somewhat stable over the years. Here's a graph showing the revenues versus operating expenditures. And so you see the addition of the RIMRA funds first started in 1718 in very small allocation, and then we got the larger allocation. The key point of this graph is just to show that, once you deduct out your operating expenditures, you have about $3 million for capital funds. And then if you look at the fiscal year 1819 budget in terms of how those, the revenues are spread, again, you have RIMRA at about 1.12 million, LTF at about 1.6, highway user tax about 1.6, and the Recology franchise fee was approximately $600,000. So that's a significant amount of money, and that loan repayment was $76,000. When you look at operating expenditures, so these are related to funding the street division, which the street division maintains the streets, sidewalks, curbs and gutters, signs, markings in the storm drain system. The street division is also the catch-all. So if you, they have a beautification team that if you have somebody that's dumping stuff, they go clean it up. If you need somebody to go pick something up, they do that. And so the street division is very gracious in terms of helping other divisions within the city, and they're typically the ones also that respond to a lot of the YC 3011 requests. They get a significant number of YC 3011 requests for signs and markings, picking up shopping carts, all kinds of stuff. So they are very important to not only public works, but the city as well. Then you can also see that there's a transfer of $66,000 to the vehicle replacement fund. So when you look at the revenues of approximately $5 million and deduct out the operating expenditures, that leaves you approximately $3.2 million for capital projects or carryover. So to shift gears away from the annual revenues received, we go to road development impact fees, often referred to as AB 1600, but it funds major planned roadway improvements identified in the general plan attributable to new development. So that's what's key, attributable to new development. So when the city did the AB 1600 study in about 2007, when you look at the cost to implement the general planned roadways, the circulation element in the general plan, the, just the city portion of those estimates is 332 million. You add into that a developer portion, which is almost that amount, but just the city portion that you would need to collect through impact fees is $332 million. When you look at our current balance of unallocated road development impact fees as of January 28th, just a little over $3 million. We're a little short. And if you were to completely unallocate all of the projects that are currently to be funded through DEF, you would only have a total of about 6.5 million if you unallocated everything. So what does this mean? That there's limited ability for the city to advance funding to serve and promote new development? And so there should be a consideration of focusing development in areas where infrastructure exists to serve that development. So if you have a new subdivision that's proposed, you know, out in the outer portion of the sphere of influence, the price tag for that's going to be significantly higher than you, if you have a subdivision that's either within the existing city limits or adjacent to, just because of not only the road improvements, but also the underground improvements necessary to be extended to serve those developments. And then we previously had a workshop that talked about the impact fees. So this just focuses on the road development impact fees. As I was putting this slide together, it didn't make sense to me why single-family residential and duplex were not the same, and then why mobile home and multifamily residential were not the same, because traditionally those uses would be similar in cost. And so in working with finance, what we found is, over the years through different phases and increases, they got off, but this is what the calculated amount is. And so as we go through this and discuss updating the impact fees, one of the things that we'll want to do is make sure that we get back in line to have similar land uses paying similar fees. The other key thing with this slide is you'll notice there's an infill area column, and then you have the citywide. So the infill area, city council previously approved a definition, so it's land that was bypassed by suburban development, it remains vacant or underutilized, and the property has readily available access to city utilities, 75% of its adjacent properties are developed, the property is not within a specific plan or master plan, or is not anticipated to be within those. All development and/or reimbursement agreements are properly executed and funded, and the property is located within the boundaries of the adopted infill map. And so here's the infill map. So you have Highway 99, Highway 20, this kind of orangish section is the former redevelopment agency. So this goes up north to about North Gate, and then you have Lincoln Road right here. Here's the wastewater chemo plant. So you can kind of see the limits of what has previously been established as the infill area. So when projects within the infill area develop, they pay this reduced impact fee, not only for roads, but they also pay reduced fees, such as connection fees as well. So key takeaways from this fiscal overview is that approximately 3 million is available annually for capital projects, including road maintenance, there are limited road development impact fees, and the TCRF loan repayment funds will end in fiscal year 1920. So with that, unless there's any questions on this specific section? Okay.
The road maintenance franchise fee?
Yes.
Of 1% for Recology, is this expected to increase with the new contract?
That's actually the language out of the new contract.
Okay. And if I, if I'm correct, RI is also going to contribute a fee if they start hauling?
Yes, there's a condition of approval on their project that they would need to negotiate a fee which would have to come to council for approval.
Okay. And the, I got that answer. So the road development impact fees that you believe need to be reset for consistency, that'll come with the new, the new, when we take another look at development impact fees?
Right, so the last item as part of this presentation, I'll be talking about the need to update the travel demand model and the road impact fees, and so I'll get into more detail as part of that presentation.
Last question is on this infill area boundary map, when was this determined?
This was, I'm testing my memory here, and Darren's in the, but I would say it's probably been two to three years.
So it's pretty fresh.
It's pretty fresh.
Okay. Thank you.
So now I will transfer it over to, oh, Councilman Cardoza.
Please, on the infill map, you had it stop at North Gate. How come it didn't go all the way to Pease Road with all that development we have? Why wouldn't that be, why wasn't, why wasn't it expanded to that?
Because when you look at the definition for what would qualify, so you know, land that was bypassed by suburban development, remains vacant or underutilized, and then 75% of its adjacent properties are developed. So if you go all the way up to Pease, there's a lot of vacant property, but it's not surrounded by developed property.
Thank you Diana.
Alright, so Ben is going to go into the pavement condition assessment.
Alright, good evening. Alright, so thank you for the patience tonight, and we'll work through it. I have a lot of more pretty pictures than the finance presentation, so hopefully it's a little more enjoyable.
I appreciate the larger font, too, thank you.
So the attempt, the attempt tonight for mine with the pavement condition section is really to give a high-level general overview as a status of where our pavement condition is in the city. And so getting into that, we have 229 miles of centerline road miles that we maintain. The road miles are broken down into functional classification as a arterial, parkway, collector, or a local neighborhood road. And so 31 miles of those are designated as an arterial, and arterial, arterial an example would be Bridge Street or Queens Avenue. Arterials are designed to move large volumes of traffic between highways and other arterials. A parkway is real similar to an arterial. An example would be Harder Parkway or Western Parkway to the west. And so with those, you'll have limited access where the neighborhoods are turned, so you don't have the driveways, and then they'll be endeavored to be tree-lined with some medians on them. And then you get into the collectors where we have 34 miles of maintained collectors, and the example of a collector would be Pebble Beach or North Gate, where you're getting those local roads coming down to the collectors and they're connecting to the arterials. And then we move into approximately 164 miles of residential roads that are your neighborhood street, the primary function is to get people to their homes and back out to the collectors. So, so the city has a pavement management system that we, that we utilize, it's, the name of its street saver, it's an industry standard in Northern California here that we, it's a nice program for this area because it corresponds with what SECOG has, when we match up different roadways, and then also some of the state CTC standards. So it's nice to be talking apples to apples when we talk about different, our state of our roads. And so the system, it establishes a 1 through 100 scale, that 1 being poor, basically being dirt, and 100 being a road that was paved this afternoon, so a brand-new road versus no road. And so with that, our, our average, so if you take all these roads behind me, and you put it into a big average, that puts us about an average of 61, which is right in the middle of the fair section. And so from 2015, when we first, 2016, when we first established this pavement management system, we were at a 67, and so in the last three to four years, we've dropped down to about a 61. And so we're still in that 60 range, you know, below the good, but in that fair, and falling fast, unfortunately. And I'll get into that a little bit more. So as part of the management program, staff has to, we actively, every time we go in there and do crack sealing, maintenance seal, maintenance project, a slurry seal, we have to go in there, we update it, so we, so it's current. And then we also reflect industry prices, and it helps generate strategies for the maintenance department, hey, these, this year during the cold season, I want you to crack seal these roads, try to stay up on top of this segment of roads, and then it also kind of helps identify where we're going to go with the maintenance projects to try to group them together for efficiency, or to really, where there's a really big need. So, you know, we have a goal up here, the ideal goal, I don't know if it's attainable or not, but one day, it's really to get to a 70, which is a good, good rating. I'll get into that a little bit more. So here's some pictures to, to what those numbers mean. So a good road, you know, pretty much a brand-new road, example up at the top-left corner is Bridge Street, that got paved in 2016. And so from 100, you know, it drops pretty quick, and we're around the 90 range for, for a good road. And that's a brand-new overlaid road, you know, with a thick structural section. It should stay in that good range for, for a while, hopefully 20 years, but we'll, we'll do, we'll start putting routine maintenance on it with some crack sealing or different treatments to keep it there, hopefully. So you get down to Walton, which is just, this is just north of Bridge Street, it's got a pavement condition index, that's what the PCI stands for, a 66. That's getting closer to kind of what the city average would be, so you kind of compare that to a typical road, I guess you would be driving around Yuba City, or state of our roads. Garden Highway, this is a particular one that drives me crazy, that I want to work on is right here north of Burns Drive, when you pull out of the water, wastewater plant, when you turn north on Garden Highway, we're down into that poor range, around a 28 for that segment. And then you get to failed section, which is an example here is Sanborn Road, south of Lincoln. And so we have some of these roads unfortunately around, and to be blunt, a lot of those have happened on these roads we've annexed from the county that are kind of a split jurisdiction, who maintains what, and just the condition that it's got to over time. So here's a, here's a graph picture, to me, that really explains a lot, and it's why the PCI is so critical. It's this, this white line here, it has this exponential curve right here, is where, when you maintain stuff that's good, so anything in that Bridge Street area, in order to maintain it, it doesn't cost much, a dollar to $3 a square yard, send the guys out there to crack seal every once in a while. But when you start getting down along the curve, all of a sudden you start to get into the 17, 7 to 15, 40 to 50 bucks, and so it starts fading fast, is what happens. And then when you get down into the reconstruction, it's complete removal and dig-up. So some of these examples of preventive maintenance, this is crack sealing, where the maintenance in-house usually handles, you know, from spraying weeds to doing the crack sealing to doing some small dig-outs to some, and then we get into the asphalt rubber capes and the, and the microseals where we're able, the road's still in pretty good shape, and so we're able to come in there with a thin layer of slurry, basically, some different types of thurri, slurries, and seal it. I've got asphalt rubber cape in here, that's relatively new, that we've been using over the last decade. We've been using it sparingly, it's, it's a double-edged product, double-edged sword with that product. It's, it's where you go in and you basically put this, almost like a crack seal rubber material all across the road, and then you, you put a chip rock, and then you come back and seal with a slurry. So it's a real thin, kind of a half-inch membrane total. It saves a lot of money because you're not grinding, and you're not putting hot mixed asphalt, and you're not having to adjust, grind along the gutter. The problem that what happens is it, it looks great when it first goes down, everybody thinks they got a new road, and then they drive it, and all those humps and bumps, and everything that was there beforehand, it hasn't really improved. And so we get a lot of blowback where it's, you know, the city spent this much money and it still rides like this. So some examples are East Onstadt from Queens up to Pease, we did, where else? You know, it was great down in the industrial area, down there in Burns. We did that maybe about nine years ago, and that was, it was kind of an off-traffic area, but it really held that together because it was so cracked up. But it, so serviceability, it's great, it gives us about 10 years by gluing this down, and it's only maybe a quarter of the price of doing the regular asphalt, but unfortunately it's, it's, it doesn't give you the finish you'd like to have on a new road. So, so I think I just had a note in here that, a little perspective is that, if you're maintaining good roads, we can maintain the 229 miles in the city for approximately a million and a half, $2 million a year. But when you get down into here, now we're talking about $7 million a year in order to maintain them, in order to maintain that PCI.
Ben, a quick question, if we found a way to finance getting us up to the 70, 71, it would, that's $7 million a year if I read this correctly?
Yeah.
Would that be $7 million a year forever?
20, 20 years, 20 years is what the, is what the projection is, basically the deferred maintenance is around 25 million, and then that's $7 million a year to start bringing us up, why things are deteriorating? And then that's what, that's what the machine is telling me, you know, it's a rough number, you know, in 20 years, things inflate and change, but it would definitely put a dent in it as towards going up compared to the, the one, one and a half that we're spending now.
Alright, so it's not get us up to 71, then we're looking at 1 to 3 moving forward?
Well, that would be the, that would be the goal, that would definitely be the goal.
Sure. But that's not going to be, that would take $7 million a year for 20 years to get us there, is what you're saying?
That's what my program's telling me.
Alright, alright. That's not good news, but it was my, answered my question. Alright, thank you.
I have a quick question. It seems that for all the time I've driven the roads around here, when somebody comes in and cuts a trench in there for whatever reason, and I'm not, I'm not suggesting that this was city people that did this, but whether it was a utility or whatever, they don't ever seem to repair the road to the same condition that it was when they got in there. Is that a fair assessment, or am I making an unfair assessment?
No, I think that's absolutely fair. And, you know, when I first started, you know, some concrete work when I, out of high school and doing some of this asphalt work, somebody told me a patch is a patch is a patch. And no matter what you do, it's really a patch, and it settles differently. It, you know, it's, it's not the same mix, it's not put down, it just, the right ability is never right. You know, so we've, we've taken a lot of measures, I would say in the last two years, a lot of push from our encroachment division to get on the utility companies, PG&E and AT&amp;T, you know, I don't want to single them out, but they're our main culprits for emergency work or gas line repairs, and they come out and then they, it gets left that way for two months as they wait to group them together and have a contractor come in. And so we've really been pushing on them to get their schedule. We confirm the limits, we know when they're doing the work, so we try to minimize those patches so they're not in a wheel path, so at least when they do do the work, we're extending the limit so it goes out to the lane line, or we're trying to go out so it's not in the middle of the bike lane, to put a little more effort into that. And then, not to harp on this one, but a big effort on the maintenance division is with the recent purchase of the grinder on the skid steer, and then the paving truck, they're going to start really making a push on the city's own patches. We have a lot of patches where the water crews go out and have to do water service, and that would help give us a better product.
Is there any opportunity for recourse to the utilities that go out there and carve up the roads after the fact? I mean, a year or so afterwards, it's obviously the patch wasn't, wasn't, didn't restore the road?
I mean, they're actively, they're definitely actively working, we're PG&E, so we have, I want to say maybe it's been about a year and a half ago that we, what would happen, I'm just giving this as an example, is our inspector, you know, I got this broken concrete everywhere where they've gone out and put a new power pole in, but they didn't tell us about the sidewalk. And so it's like, hey, you guys need to figure this out, or we're not going to give you any other power pole encroachment permit. And so, I mean, we were, we have a little bit of leverage, they still have to maintain their facilities and the franchise agreements and the PUC, but we do try to put some leverage on them where we can hold up new work if they're not doing the work properly. And then also we look at it for, the city, the city of Yuba City doesn't have a moratorium, but some agencies do, where, hey, we built this brand-new Bridge Street, and then all of a sudden I get a permit come across my desk in six months that says, hey, can I cut up, can I cut up Bridge Street to put in a repair? And that's, that's really painful, you know, where we, where we spent so much time doing the fix and the money. And so we look at options to make them go deeper, farther out, where we work with them beforehand to try to minimize that. But it's not perfect, and I got a lot of catch-up.
Well, it seems, especially this wet winter, that those, those areas that were substandard before have now really taken, taken for, I mean, it's worse, and I can see the pavement crumbling. I think you said you were going to talk about that, but it, it's not getting any better this winter, I don't think.
You know, we're definitely agreed, very much agreed, and then I'm definitely with the YC 31, 311 app. If you have a utility patch and our guys see it, we're happy to, if we, because we have the encroachment permit process where we do track them, hey, it was an AT&amp;T trench or a PG&E trench, if we know it's starting to run into a failure spot, we can put that pressure on them to get it fixed.
Ben, on the road that you mentioned, East Onstadt, I want to tell you something that your software doesn't take into consideration, and Mr. Burns was here a few weeks ago talking about the manhole covers. You get less traffic, I take that route, or I used to, and because of those, I've rerouted, and now I go north on East Onstadt and kind of cross Pease and come down Stabler. So you are going to get more use out of that road because people like myself aren't using it.
Well, I don't know if that's the, the answer, but we're definitely working on the, raising the manholes.
Sorry, Ben.
No, you're good. Yeah, and to be blunt, too, the money just doesn't, a million dollars isn't a million dollars anymore, and then there's a lot of requirements with ADA ramps, if I get in and do a microseal project, really the only project you could do without upgrading the ramps, and those ramps run anywhere between $5,000 to $10,000 now each, and so those start adding up real quick, and unfortunately, a million dollars doesn't go very far. So this is just a quick reference to the map behind me. And so in the pavement management system, it basically produces a GIS image, you know, this isn't exact, I want to, so if everybody comes up and looks at their particular road, it was based on input in 2016, and as we updated, so it might be a little bit off based on any recent changes, you know, that weren't inputted correctly, or, or some sort of deterioration that we don't know. But it's really meant to be a snapshot to kind of give you a feel of what's going on with some of the core streets, so if you, in the, in the center of town, you see a lot of red, a lot of that has to do with the age, you know, that's some of the original streets, plus their concrete, and so it gets into this tough situation for us where we've, we've fallen off that edge on that exponential graph, and then they're really hard to maintain because you've gotten into that level of reconstruct or fail, and then it's kind of, where do you start? You know, the, the base is no good, the utilities are no good, the drainage is no good, the ramps aren't any good, and so all of a sudden you could spend a million dollars doing one block on Almond Street, a local residential road, and is that where you want to prioritize all of the funds for that year? So, and then you could kind of get a general overview that most of the residential roads... So, and then you could kind of get a general overview that most of the residential roads. Um, to the north and south are kind of in that blue fair range, most of it with the newer development like for Uba City, you know, in the last two decades. So it's starting to hang in there, but we're, we're starting, we're, we're starting to kind of drop on that um, into that fair range where we're trying to put those slurry seals. Keep the good roads good. I mean, what these programs really tell you is keep the good roads good because you get the most bang for your buck. But at the same time, we got reality where we, we can't just let a road go to dirt. And so it's, it's the balance of trying to figure out how to. Maximize the good and then try to hold, hold the, the poor together. So, and then just, just a quick note for fact, the arterials, as we talked, the, the bridge streets, the Queens Avenue. Sixty-three, the collectors average fifty-five. So our collectors, those um, North Gates and Pebble Beaches. Are, are in a lower um, index, I guess than, than um, the, the local roads and arterials. So I ran a few scenarios, just um, just for some information. So with the scenarios. It's basically saying that if we continue spending about the one point five million dollars per year that we have. By twenty thirty-eight, so basically twenty years from now, we're gonna drop to a thirty-nine, kind of an average of thirty-nine. And then which would put us right in the middle of that poor range. If we spend about seven million dollars a year, you're looking about keeping us in that sixty range. And in order to get us up to the seventy in twenty years, it's talking about spending. Closer to eight million, seven point eight million dollars a year to start bringing us above where we're at, bring us up into that good range. And then where you're talking about where you could lower that annual cost hopefully. So this is um, it's kind of a busy graph, but it's just a visual where, where we're just talking about with the current funding. So this is assuming one point five million dollars a year for the next twenty years. It's just a little red bar down at the bottom. It starts off with about a twenty-five million dollar deferred maintenance. And then it, it shows our PCI up here around a sixty-one. And then what happens is that over time with, with the funding not meeting the needs, PCI is gonna drop to about a thirty-nine is the green line. And your deferred maintenance goes up because of that um exponential cost difference. So key takeaways, the current pavement management, the, the current pavement condition is fair. The road conditions will continue to deteriorate at current funding levels. You know, the difference is a delta of about one point five to seven million dollars a year. Staff is working to maximize the use of available funding. Um, in, in order to maximize those, it's looking at, as stated earlier, keeping the good roads good while holding together and working to improve the poor roads. Looking for those grant opportunities or, or matching funds. Um, when we can to try to um, put those onto those poor roads or opportunities to, to save money so we could use it elsewhere. And then um, also look into those less expensive. Maintenance methods where, where you're looking at the seal coats, the rubber cape seals and the thin overlays. And so um. I, I know a, a goal for my, my division is with um, you've seen it some uh, in, in Roseville where they've done more of a. A campaign, maybe more of a um outreach to the public to kind of show what the slurry seals are and the expectations. To uh, so people aren't surprised when they see East Onstott. But uh, but also we're trying to learn from those to see what we can smooth out and bring up so, so we don't have everybody reroute into different roads. But um, but really we're gonna be utilizing those more and more um, in order to stretch the dollars. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions about the pavement condition.
To the mayor? Ben, uh, what's? Uncle Jerry's money we're supposed to have with the gas taxes, it's still one point five? Do we have any extra to put towards it each year? Is there any extra money that we were getting from the state from that gas tax?
So, so absolutely. I'm, I'm gonna get into that a little bit. You're gonna get to make some important decisions about Bridge Street. But it is um, Diana's um. It came through on that graph in the dollar amount. The first year since it was half, it was a partial year, it was four hundred, close to four hundred thousand and then now it's about one point one going forward. Um, for the foreseeable future.
That be the one point five with us and then the one point extra five with the governor for a total of three million we can invest or is it still?
So right now we've received it for a year and a half and we've programmed, we've put it into a separate CIP account. Um, I don't, I don't remember the exact name, but I believe it's the, the RIMRA or SB one account under the, under the CIP. And then we've programmed a little bit of money into the Franklin Road widening project.
Okay.
So right now we've, we've, I've, I've stockpiled it.
So this money that we're using is also for projects, Sanborn, Franklin, so on and so forth. It's not just for the paving, trying to catch up on our paving.
Right. So just to clarify, so the financial overview that I provided included that money. So that three million dollars includes the SB one funds.
Do you have to apply for that money or is it just uh?
We, we have to jump through a few hoops, but, but we do receive it. Basically, we have to, I'm, I'm gonna come back April second. To sta- to the council with, where you have to reestablish your project list. And then you have to just, you have to input to the CTC um, for confirmation that you approved the list. And then there's a little accounting on it where basically you, you tell the CTC where you've spent the money. And so of ours, it's been pretty simple so far because we've, we've pretty much allocated to those two projects that we haven't built yet.
Thank you.
Ben, I, in the. Budget one oh one presentation, I believe there was um. It's all becoming a blur now, but I believe there was some money set aside for uh, grants or grant consulting. Was that in your department or was that a different department?
So in the CIP, um, the, the Public Works Department regularly gets grants. And so in the CIP, you'll see um, different funding sources down there with the nine eight or nine, is it nine seven? I, I'm losing it, but uh, it's getting late, but, but in the CIP, we'll show those grant funds as revenues coming in there, so it reflects it in the budget.
And the, the reason I'm asking is because those takeaways that you said leveraging available other funding sources. Are there other, besides the existing fund, is there anything that is in the works right now?
So not regular funds. I, I mean, we do, we do regularly through our region and through the state, there, there's grant programs. So the active transportation program that Diana mentioned and a lot of that SB one money that's floating through. Um, I, I, you know, I shouldn't say, there's a lot of, I'll let Diana add on to that.
I'm just gonna add to it. So I don't know if you were looking at the professional services breakdown. But it, within engineering, we pay for a company called Blaze and Associates.
Yeah.
And they help us prepare grant applications. They've been very successful in helping us prepare grant applications.
Because I remember one of the engineers in your department. He's way in the back.
Mandeep.
Mandeep, yes, was talking about his specific, uh, specific grant that they were working on with this group, I think.
Yes, probably, that was probably Kevin or Josh. But yeah, so we work with Blaze on a regular basis for, to prepare multiple grant applications. I will say, you know, ten years ago, we could go to Secog and we could get a grant for road rehab. That, that doesn't happen anymore. You have to have a project tied to complete streets where you're also implementing pedestrian and bicyclist. Improvements as well. And so for a project that Ben's gonna be talking about a minute with the Bridge Street Widening Project. We've submitted multiple grant applications under multiple programs and we have not been successful on any one of them. And so we pursue grants anytime we think that we can um, apply and make them apply to projects that are priority for the council. But um, it's becoming more and more difficult to attain those grants, especially when you're talking about for road rehabilitation. They're not, they're not really meant for that nowadays.
Alright, I'll listen to you, your part two, Ben, then.
Alright, real quick, I'm sorry. So if we do get any more grants and whatnot. That will be in addition to the three million we already have budgeted. So it's, we're creeping up on that seven point eight that we'd like to have. A little bit anyway.
Well, I mean, the grants are, for Public Works are all over the place with water for groundwater wells to um. Specifically for roads, usually we're looking at a hundred thousand dollar Cal Recycle Rubber Grant.
Oh, so not very big.
Franklin Road Widening where we're doing uh, new bike lanes and sidewalks, but it's not really adding to the uh, the maintenance, the maintenance.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, so the capital improvement program, um, the finance department touched on this a little bit. I'm gonna focus in on the streets and roads section. And so here's some of the pretty pictures of some projects that we did last year, um, just around town. With the demolitions on Bridge Street, they work on Garden Highway. And so. Basically before you, there's a table, it's kind of providing a high level of some of the priority projects. That we're working on through the um, the CIP Streets and Roads. If, if, if you look at the Streets and Roads CIP, what you're gonna see is you're gonna see some maintenance projects where it was the striping, the drainage. Um, traffic signal, um, where, where those are funded every year for a hundred and twenty-five thousand or, or a hundred thousand depending on. Kind of what we think we need to do to keep the striping up and some of the drainage needs around town for various little projects that come up. And these projects are more specific to um, uh, new widening or specific um, maintenance activities. And so I'll go into detail with them here a little bit more. So before you hear is um, it's an old exhibit from a few years ago that basically shows the phasing of Bridge Street. So past councils and has identified Bridge Street as a prior, priority project. It basically is a priority corridor. And so with that, we've, we focused on phase one, which uh, of doing the improvements, which was that Cooper to Plumas. And then right now we're working on the bridge, which is phase two. And then we'll get into phase three here and with the idea that we would have a four lane road from ninety-nine over the bridge into Marysville. So a quick recap, phase one was constructed in twenty, two thousand sixteen for about three and a half million dollars. It was a nice project. Um, I think the community's been happy with it. Um, just from the, the state of the past road, it was an old concrete street, um, that really was in need of some repair. Second phase is the Fifth Street Bridge. Many of you are, are familiar with this project with recent tours. It's a seventy-two million dollar project approximately. The current contract completion date, we're looking around July twenty twenty. And um, with about forty-one percent of the time used, two hundred and forty-six days left and. And what have we got? You know, we're, we're kind of dealing right now with pouring the concrete deck. Um, moving some equipment, some trestle work around with, with uh, recent rains. And um, coordinating to finish up the deck and do some roadwork in Marysville as we move forward.
I have a question real quick. Maybe not so quick. Um, with, with some of the things that are going on weather wise. Does it have a potential to increase the cost of the project?
So, so my understanding is no. I mean, it's, it's a um. Right now, they're working in, when was bid, they're working in a time period that wasn't um, necessarily contracted. They're working in this window that was um, additional permitted and with an expectation that they, during the wet season, they might not. Have permission to work with inside the levy banks at this time. And so they've really been ahead of schedule because the, the weather has been so good and the water's been relatively low, um, so that they're ahead of schedule. And so. So right now we're, you know, I think originally it's projected for December twenty twenty, now we're up to July. So I, I haven't heard of any um, claims or any issues with them. This is just part of the, the originally scheduled work and they've really been lucky to work so far. As they have been.
Were there contingency fees associated with the project?
There are.
What happens to those contingency fees if they're not used? Could they be re-allocated to that Bridge Street corridor or they have to go back?
Most likely some of them will, will go back or be unfunded if we own, um, depending on how we negotiate with Secog. But right now those were um, Secog funds and, and um, federal funds. And so the percentages would be broken out and then what wasn't used um, for the determined work would, would be unallocated.
Thanks.
So, so phase three, this is the uh, current project that's in design. It's the section of road from Gray Avenue to, to Cooper. Um, it's the pinch point that many people are familiar with. It's the two lanes. Um, where, where the push is to get it to four lanes and to match the eastern seg- segment. And so um. This, this is really the project that's in design, that's, that's um. That, that's got the two primary challenges going on right now is where we've been. The first challenge was uh. Diana's been really successful at purchasing the property on the north side, so in order to gain that right away. So over the last couple of years, we've purchased all of the properties. Um, the remaining challenge is we have three, three residences that we're coordinating with the housing authority to relocate. So we gotta begin relocation services. And the second issue is funding. So as Diana, Diana mentioned, we've submitted multiple. Projects to the state and to the feds through Tiger, Build, ATP applications, different um, different regional. And we just haven't been able to gain any money or bring any money for, for this project. And so it sits at about a, a construction cost of approximately six point five million. And we have about one point one. I'll need to check the exact math, but we have a shortfall of about five million, five and a half million dollars. Um, to fund this project. And um, and so this is where it gets into that conversation is if we want to proceed forward. And keep that as a priority project and no funding's coming in, where, where do I pull that money from? So then, then your options start coming from the, the SB one, the RIMRA money. Um, not putting out um, those maintenance for, for a couple of years and pulling in maybe more some of the diff. And so what we'll look at over the next few months as we finalize the plans and, and move forward is come back to council with a funding strategy. On what we think maybe is the best improvement way to um, try to fund this project if council still wants to move forward with it. So the next project um, that we're excited to get off the books here is the Franklin Road. Um, improvement project from Palora to Gray Avenue. This is partially funded through a um. A CMAC grant, so it was a grant through um, I think Secog Regional originally through that Active Transportation. Program where they gave us some money for um, the sidewalks and for the bike lanes. And so, so with that, it's, it's one of those projects where it's, it's not easy just to put sidewalks in, existing infrastructure. Because that turns into road improvements, adding the utilities, trying to match existing um, residences that are, that are different grades. And so, but we're getting real close. So right now staff is, is finalizing the plans and the authorization request to Caltrans. And we're looking forward to putting that out and, and getting it built this summer.
Ben?
Yep.
South side from South Berth, Palora, that's county, are they contributing to that one point three?
They, they are. And so they've. To be continued slightly with that, but uh, so we, we staff's had negotiations with them. And with the Sanborn Road Improvement Project and with this one, um, we've determined their responsible share. And so right now staff is coordinating that um, basically reimbursement agreement for those portions.
Thank you.
This is a Sanborn Road Drainage Improvement Project. It's um. It's, it's a smaller project, but it, we kind of highlighted that it's the southwest corner and it's um, it's a partnership again with the county. We bid this project out last fall, late fall and with the contractors All American. Um, which is a local contractor and, and what's basically holding it up right now is, is with the weather. And then also finalizing that funding agreement with the county. So we're, we're hoping to get that done here shortly so we could get them going as soon as possible. And it's not a, a real, it, it's a simple project. It's basically a road overlay that will fix a lot of the road deficiencies. But we're hoping really to fix the drainage on that east side. There's some parcels that were built um, in the county that are basically lower than the road. And it, and it puts in a bad spot for when it rains. Detention ponds, yes, yes. They definitely um, are holding their water. So thi- this is a, a project that's um, we've been working through. The Tully Parkway Queens Avenue Extension. It's about a two point seven million dollar job. This was um. It, it's really um, over the years developer contribution, as, as these subdivisions have divided. And um, and been built here on the north and the south, they've paid the city um, fees and lieu. So, so it didn't make sense on the timing and how they came through to build the road or build their half of the road. And so they paid the city um, fees and lieu that we've been sitting on and so. So with that, we've been taking the steps to start moving forward to make that connection to alleviate some of the issues on, on blaving a beer house, how they come out of there. And so right now, we're working through the demolition and relocation of the utilities with PG&E and then the design for the roadway.
So Ben, one more question please sir. So that, that two point seven, do we have like a million dollars already saved? Or is that the two point seven we need plus what we already have saved in order to do that project?
You know, man, that's a good question. I was trying to get the exact number before I came in here and I could definitely follow up with it. I don't want to give you a wrong number, so I. I don't want to give you a wrong number, so I could I could follow up with it.
Okay, well, the main thing is it is it two point seven to do the project and we already have money towards it or do we need?
We don't, we don't have two point seven. I mean, we're gonna have to use city funds in order to pay for it. Wait, would and um it's maybe a little bit of interesting conversation is um is when these developers come in, this Queens Avenue and Tully Parkway, they're um impact fee roads. And so what the impact fee road means is that the city through their impact fees, they collect, they're on a they're on the hook for paying, so basically for those center lanes. So uh through our impact fees, we're supposed to pay for those two middle lanes. And then the developer paid for the outside lane um along their property. And so there was a price um determined for for that road improvement. Around four hundred dollars a lineal foot or so, but the city really inherited it, the that middle lane responsibility in order to build it. And so so we've collected the money for a portion of this, a a portion of of back here, the south portion. But the city's ultimately on the hook for the middle and then also um front load some of the development costs on this side.
Okay.
It'd be interesting to know what the city is on the hook, how much that. And do we have a timeline? Do we have to have it built by Ben?
We don't. So i- it's the city's discretion on how we use those development monies. Impact fee monies with development. With this one, it was it was a priority with some of the issues previously with the issues at Blevin and Butte House. But uh time, time changes things, right, with the available funding and the priorities at those times. And so right now, we're we're really working through the design and getting the um getting everything moved out of the way with the house and the utility, so we can move forward depending on where we're at.
Seems to be a lot of money right there for a couple hundred yards of roadway, but it'd be nice to see what we have to pay. Thank you.
So can I ask one more question, please, Ben? Can that money be taken and put down on Bridge Street between Cooper and Gray? If we council decide to do something like that?
Not the developer contribution.
Okay.
But the the impact fee portion, um a portion of it associated with um new service, new development. So key takeaways, the bridge will be wrapping up next summer. The Bridge Street Corridor has been previously designated as the priority corridor and project. If the city wants to move forward with phase three, the current funding, the current funding shortfall is approximately five point four million dollars. Funding for the Bridge Street Corridor will impact the delivery of other CIP projects. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions or turn it over to Diana.
I will say that the Queens Tully uh project, if you look at roadways that we receive complaints, that Blevin Butte House intersection is a intersection that we receive a lot of complaints about. And if you just look at the traffic, the volume of traffic that goes to that intersection, it's pretty amazing as to what that intersection um carries every day just between River Valley High School, View Vista School and the neighborhoods within that area, so.
It does. I'd be interested if we can get with Rob to see if there's any type of crash picture at Blevin and Butte House.
Yeah, we can pull, we can pull accident data.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. So this item I'm really excited to talk about because this project checks so many boxes for public works in terms of what um we've heard council priority is to move forward. And so when you look at travel demand model update and development impact fee study, um you might not think it's a big deal, but in our world, it's a big deal. So the city's travel demand model was prepared in two thousand four and periodically updated since with various projects. So for instance, El Margarita Master Plan, Lincolnne Specific Plan, the Fifth Street Bridge, as big projects come in, we update the travel demand model. The roadway network was based upon the general plan and the model uses the basis for traffic impact studies for not only city projects, but also private development projects. So what is a travel demand model? So a traffic engineer takes the roadway um network identified in the general plan, takes build out conditions of the general plan and applies traffic to that roadway network to tell you what the roadways need to look like. You then take that information, prepare cost estimates from that and then from that you prepare your impact fees, your AB sixteen hundred study. You also then use that model to prepare impact studies so that you can look at condition mitigation measures for directly related to projects for not only existing conditions, but also cumulative conditions. So in in the transportation world, very key. So why the need to update? Uh we need to reassess growth projections. At the time that that model was prepared, growth projections were much higher than what we've actually experienced over the last few years. We need to update traffic count data and land uses. And one of the things so key with bringing this forward right now is that we need to, you update traffic count data while school's in. And so um at the next council meeting on March fifth, we'll be bringing forward a contract for a consultant to actually do this work. But one of the reasons that we are requesting to do it now is so that we can collect that traffic count data before school's out for the school year. Another reason, evaluate the need for four lane arterials, update the circulation element of the general plan, provide thresholds for when a traffic impact study is triggered for development projects. SB seven forty-three implementation, which I'm gonna go into more detail for each of these items, and then update the road development impact fee. So here's a prime example of the need to evaluate four lane arterials. Under the master, the general plan, it shows Bridge Street as being four lanes from Western Parkway all the way to the east. When we did an updated analysis, we questioned, do we really need Bridge Street to be four lanes all the way to Western Parkway? Is it really gonna carry that much traffic? And what we found is no, it's not. West of El Margarita Road, you can actually decrease it to a two lane road, which serves a couple benefits. Number one, it no longer becomes an impact fee roadway. It becomes just a local developer roadway. And number two, you're not overbuilding infrastructure that you have to maintain in the future. And so just through that one scenario, we found a benefit. And so as part of this, what we want to do is analyze all of the arterials going to the limits of the sphere of influence. So you know, Bog Road, Franklin Road, Lincoln Road, Township, Peas, look, reevaluating all of those and saying, do we really need to level the total number of lanes that um the current model shows? We also need to address the level service policy. What we found is under the cumulative condition, Bridge Street will be level service F. So level of service is a measure of delay. So when you're sitting at an intersection for a long time, when you're sitting on a roadway segment, that's the level service delay. So under cumulative conditions, Bridge Street will have a level of service F. Under the current general plan, the only exception on Bridge Street is actually the bridge itself. You're allowed to have a level service F. Once you get off the bridge, that's not acceptable. And so what that's gonna impact is development. As you have projects come forward and they're required to do a traffic study, we're gonna say, I'm sorry, you um have level service F. You can't move forward, but the unfortunate thing is you can't build out of it either. There's not enough infrastructure to build to get out of it. And so we need to reassess the level service policy. Also, to provide guidance on thresholds that could trigger traffic impact study for development projects. Right now, we use a threshold of fifty PMP hour trips. So if a project application comes in, we look quickly as, do we think this project could generate more than fifty PMP hour trips? If the answer is yes, you need to prepare a traffic impact study. And then SB seven forty-three. So this replaces intersection delay so that level of service with vehicle miles travel of travel as the primary transportation metric used in environmental documents. So the provisions of SB seven forty-three become effective statewide on July first twenty twenty. So this is a complete shift in how projects are evaluated from a sequoia standpoint. Our current model is not set up to be able to analyze this. So as you have project applications come forward after July first twenty twenty, if we don't update our travel demand model, we're not gonna be able to analyze it for vehicle miles traveled, which is gonna impact their ability to do their sequel analysis. So timing of this is um very key because this project is going to take approximately a year to year and a half to complete. And so working backwards, if you look at July of twenty twenty, uh we need to be get get started now. And the consultant that we're bringing forward, um Fair and Peers, we have a longstanding relationship with them. And other agencies are already lining them up to, they've already completed this work for some agencies, other agencies are lining this work up. And so um we've approached them at a very good time for them to be able to include Yuba City in their um their lineup for work. And the development of the impact fee study. So you know, the State of California Mitigation Act, also known as AB sixteen hundred, requires the establishment of a nexus when creating a traffic impact fee for new development. So we'll take the results from the updated travel demand model and those will be used to update the city's road development impact fees. So I have this master spreadsheet that has all the general plan roadways with cost estimates in them. And so we'll take the output from the travel demand model in terms of the number, the the configuration of the roadways, the lanes. We'll update the um construction estimates for those and then reassess the allocation between city costs and developer costs to then come forward to council with a recommendation for an updated developer impact fee. So going to my my slide in my earlier portion of the presentation where I told you the impact fees are slightly off for similar uses, that would be our opportunity to also correct that as well. So next steps, um we obtained a proposal from Fair and Peers to update the travel demand model and road development impact fees. And the proposal will go to council on March fifth. Now, I don't want you to have sticker shock. You, there's the potential for sticker shock. The cost for this is three hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. But like I said, this checks so many boxes for public works in terms of the ability to analyze projects, not only city projects, but also projects for future development, update our road in impact fees and set us um set us in a good place for years to come in terms of assessing projects and uh the general plan circulation element. So with that, for a wrap up, summaries, financial overview, we have multiple funding sources with different requirements restrictions. Our pavement contin- condition is deteriorating. As Ben mentioned, seven million required annually just to maintain the current pavement condition index and we have about one and a half million dollars available. The Bridge Street Corridor is the priority uh corridor. And then funding for that will impact future road maintenance and new projects. And then we have the uh travel model, travel demand model update. So with that, Ben, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Diana, just one quick one. I I know uh and Mayor Harris probably has even more current information than I. Governor's new proposed budget include any transportation funding for local government that you're aware of?
Not that I'm aware of, no. But I I do wanna, so we had at the last council meeting, James Corliss with Secog. And he brought up a couple of different projects that have the potential to lead for funding for infill development. And so I think that that's the area that we need to pay attention to as they talk about housing, is how can we maximize that to focus on infill development within the city?
That green means go, is that the, yeah?
Yeah, that pilot project, mm-hmm.
Through the mayor. Um Diana, this is very timely and we have to do this traffic study, like you said, to get ahead of this curve. But when you look at the overlay of the infill area from the previous to the pavement conditions that are there now doing the um the traffic studies. We've we've kind of had a few of these conversations, but we've got to get even more focused. And I'm hoping a lot of this data will be able to overlay with each other because we need to be really incentivizing and working with the ad hoc committee, Mr. Mayor, that we talked about before with the developers and stuff, to encourage the development. Because we can use these fees in the infill areas and create even districts within that infill area to give them more concentrated areas to develop, to help take care of. I see a whole area of red and yellow up there that's really in trouble right behind you, that that may be our focus and it's part of the infill area and begin to work out. But the key to this whole thing is strategically growing the city. That's how we're gonna fix it all and get the funding.
Yeah, I agree. What's and the term is escaping me where they have additional uh Fremont Hospital, for example, is in that area. What is that called? No, there's a program. That's it, the opportunity zones. We can capitalize on that as well, hopefully. Alright, thank you. You done?
We're done.
Alright, well, obviously a lot of work went into this and it was very informative. Yes, ma'am, go right ahead.
Thank you. Uh the three hundred potential, three hundred twenty-five thousand. Where's that money gonna come from?
So there's currently money programmed in the capital improvement program. Um as part of the staff report, we would be requesting an additional transfer of unallocated developer impact fees, so road impact fees. So it'd come out of that three million dollars of unallocated that I showed on that slide.
So it's coming out of that pot.
Yes, which is appropriate because it's related to new development.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright. Does anybody have anything? Anybody out there? Sir, come on up to the podium. Welcome. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Lawrence Mertz. I live in North Yuba City, lived here for forty-five years. And I'm concerned about the excessive amount of traffic that all of this creates on the lateral, on all the streets, all your corridors. There is no access to the highway except at Queens Avenue. We have no access to to even for emergency regress. What's the possibility of getting funding to put a highway interchange at Peas Road? It would take a lot of stress off the lateral streets and definitely reduce the traffic on them.
I know it's definitely on our radar, sir. It's uh it's a lot of planning and I at the minimum, getting the money is a big, is a huge problem.
Lot of money.
But I uh couldn't agree with you more that that's definitely um something that needs to happen in the future.
Well, somehow Sutter County managed to find the funding to put a highway interchange at Riego Road.
Right.
What? The possibility of getting Sutter County to pony up some of the money to upgrade the the Peas Road is the northern perimeter of the city. That's your outer limit, your northern limit. And there's absolutely no highway access except at Queens Avenue. And everyone that has drove driven Queens Avenue knows how horrible the traffic is over that highway interchange. It's it's almost a joke watching the traffic.
Right.
That's my basic consensus.
Yep. Thank you very much.
Thank you for listening to me.
Bob? Definitely a good point.
Possibly consider the idea of a price break for infill development versus way out in the boonies. I know you're thinking about south of Bog Road for the BSMP. And um it seems to me you've got a huge amount of areas that are infill areas that are undeveloped within your current zone of influence. That's that's the only idea I can suggest, some kind of price break as an incentive to builders.
Thank you, Bob. Definitely favor of infill. Um you might, if you have the access to the slides or whatnot there, we do give a fifty percent break on impact fees for infill. Yeah. Which I think is a good idea. Anybody else at all? Alright, thank you very much. Thank you folks for being here so late. Our attorney's raising her hand. I'm trying to get out of here. Nothing, Mr. Attorney? Did he raise his hand?